Yeah.
If you go from Hamilton, they're maybe a big thick blue bottle. Say we go into that light stuff.
We could use those captions to fill them up every time.
Now, those would flop around a little bit.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
I'll start back.
I've got another part-time job to go to after this one.
We're back on the first, is that right?
Yep, yes.
November 1st. Kind of almost synchronized, but...
Close.
Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, October 18th, 2016, meeting of Middletown City Council's order. If you please stand and join me in a moment meditation and the pledge to lift the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice brought.
Ms. Gank, if you'd roll please.
Ms. Bronston.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Ricard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here.
All right, first on our agenda this evening, we have a special presentation. I'd like to invite Mr. Joe Braden from the Auditor of State's office down to present that.
All right.
Good evening.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. On behalf of Auditor of State, Dave Yost, and present the City of Middletown with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for the audit period of 2015. It's important to note, it just puts the City of Middletown in a very unique group. The Auditor of State's office audits nearly 6,000 entities and less than 300 of them are even eligible for this award. So to receive this award, I'd like to give you the criteria for that. So I'm gonna go down this real quick, so bear with me. You need to, first thing you have to do is complete a comprehensive annual financial report, which we refer to as a CAFER, within six months of a fiscal year end. Have a clean audit with no findings for recoveries, no material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or questioned costs. Have no other financial concerns. And the management letter must contain no comments related to ethics referrals, questioned costs less than $10,000, lack of timely report submission, reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit, findings for recovery, or public meetings or public records issues. This award represents not only every city employee who strives each day to achieve accounting excellence, but also want to recognize the mayor and the council and all of the effort that they've done and an excellent job of accounting for all the dollars throughout the year. I also want to recognize Jacob Burton, if you'd like to come on up here, the Director of Finance, for his outstanding leadership, professionalism, and commitment to fiscal integrity. Job well done, Jacob. And on behalf of Auditor of State, Dave Yost, I'd like to present to you the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate you coming down this evening. And congratulations, Jacob. That's a nice honor to consider and to continue that recognition. So keep up the good work. So, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to our public hearings for this evening. We have two public hearings. First is for zone change case 1-16, request by applicant Jeff Faulkner, trustee requesting approval to rezone property located at 2,000 Germantown Road, Middletown, Ohio, approximately 14.5 acres from I-1 Industrial Park District to C-2 Roadside Commercial. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. We've got the two almost identical zoning public hearings tonight. The first one is, this is our zoning map as it currently stands. The starred property is the area in question that we're looking at tonight. First, if you're familiar with the old Riverside Trailer Park, this is the front part of that old park that fronts Germantown Road. Similar thing with the aerial view of the same property. And if you haven't been out there a while, we've cleared out the old mobile homes from that. It's been fenced off, and this is current photographs of that property as it stands today. Little history on this, this is formerly part again of the Riverside Trailer Mobile Home Park. If you were newer to council, this went into receivership during the foreclosure crisis and the recession. During that time, we were able to negotiate with the receiver to remove about 115 abandoned dilapidated trailers, mobile homes, out of that park. As it came out of receivership, it was bought by a mobile home owner company that I believe, I believe it was North Carolina, it was either North or South Carolina, I believe it was North. And they split off this piece and the second piece tonight that you're gonna consider, and sold them off separately away from the mobile home park. It's been fenced off at this point, and that was done in 2013. On May of 2014, Planning Commission heard a zoning request change for this property and the other property that you're gonna look at tonight, from I-1 Industrial Park District to C-2 Commercial Roadside District. At that time, that zoning, Planning Commission denied that application as being inconsistent with the city master plan and the city airport master plan. On August 3rd of this year, Mr. Faulkner came forward and submitted again a zone change for the property from I-1 Industrial Park to C-2 Commercial Roadside, due to the fact that the property had remained vacant for an additional two to three years. And he has submitted a business plan with the rezone application for a recreational vehicle park with recreational offerings. Staff, always is first place where we start with this, is currently zoned I-1 Industrial Park. Mr. Faulkner is requesting to change it to C-2 Commercial Roadside zoning. That would normally have an open and enclosed uses catering primarily to highway-associated demands. Examples of C-2 are retail sales, personal and business services, eating and drinking establishments, auto service, and shopping groups. Mr. Faulkner, get my notes here. Identify the following justifications for the rezone to C-2. The existing mobile home site would be numbered and used as an RV and camper sites throughout the 14.5 acres. Would also affect, give access to the Little Miami River, bike riding, hiking trails, Hook Air Fort activities. Would also have potential to help support Smith Park all-day sporting, soccer tournaments, and things like that in the area. It would be a recycled use of one of the city's ISORs that has been vacant for, I believe, at least the 11 years I've been with the city. And it already has the infrastructure in place to support the RV and campers from its prior use as a mobile home park. The applicant's proposed RV park and recreation area would fit in with the proposed C-2 Commercial Roadside District under our personal and business services, and so it would be consistent with that zoning. Any retail and personal and business services allowed in the C-1 District would also allow, in the C-3 District would be acceptable in the proposed C-2 Roadside Commercial District. We don't have a problem with that, but wanted to at least bring it to everybody's attention. In the C-1 District, you've got things like bakeries, beer and wine carryouts, candy shops, delicatessens, drugstores, groceries, ice cream and dairy product stores, magazine and newsstands, record shops, shoe stores, hobby shops, barber and beauty, dry cleaning, laundry pickup stations. In the C-3 area, you would have things like department stores, discount stores, garden supply, hardware and paint stores, business and professional offices of any client, including medical clinics, photography studios, health salons, lawn and garden equipment, et cetera. One of the analysis that our current zoning requires us to take is to measure this against the master plan, and in this case, the airport strategic plan. We have done that in this case because it's required as part of our thing, but I would note that this is being evaluated against a master plan that was designed to be from 2005 to 2010. The recession has largely made that an obsolete plan, and while we look at it, we don't believe it has near the value that it had maybe five or 10 years ago in analyzing this current evaluation of this request. At that time in 2005, the master plan noted that this area was largely vacant and underutilized with nuisance structures. Nuisance structures are gone, but it's still largely vacant and underutilized, and the master plan in this case has, in my mind, limited weight in our discussion. Same thing with the airport master plan. We're in the process of, in 2017, relaying out the airport layout plan. One of the things that we will look at, the only thing that would cause us any heartache at all would be if we went to a C-2, we would still have FAA clearance issues. Mr. Faulkner could not go anything that would get into the airports, but again, that would be an individual use question, not a zoning question for this, but that would be our only minor concern as far as the airport. Other departmental comments, if it is assumed and was presented as Planning Commission, that there would be no access to this site from Germantown Road. If in the future, Mr. Faulkner wanted to have a direct line off of Germantown, there would have to be a traffic impact study completed to allow that change, and that would again have to go back through Planning Commission for that purpose. The amendment of the map process, Planning Commission takes a first look at it. They would have a public hearing and review the report. Planning Commission may recommend the application be approved, be modified, or denied. In this case, they did recommend approval. They are then certified to City Council. The next step is this public hearing that we're having right now. After that, opportunity will be afforded 30 days' notice through the two readings to make any comments to City Council. It will be voted on as a second reading at the November 1st meeting. Planning Commission has recommended approval. Staff also recommends approval of this zoning request change, excuse me. And the Planning Director and the zoning administrator are in attendance tonight if there are any specific questions that I can't answer.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
I have one. I believe there's still a few RVs or mobile homes, mobile homes there. Are they, are people still living there?
A few people. You're talking about Riverside. There's nothing on this property at all.
Okay.
There are some back in Riverside. If I was to guess, it's been six months or so since I've been back there, 25 maybe, that are still in play back there. They're not in great shape. The nice thing is, the former owner fenced it off with a privacy fence so that you can't see it from Germantown Road, so it improved the view, even if behind the fence is not everything we'd like it to be.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Since this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak in favor of the proposed zone change. Anyone to speak in favor of? Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Faulkner. My business address is 2968 Wolverhammer Road, Middletown, Ohio.
Good evening.
Evening. Well, I showed up tonight to, if anybody has any questions, any comments about what I've proposed. The research that went into the land and into this idea of having this RV park was really more of a group effort from the city staff. It was an idea where I was looking at taking this land on another direction, and she brought it to me, and when I started really looking at it, I thought, wow, this is something that could really benefit the city. Still benefit, work with the airport, because, you know, the airport has the balloon fest, they have fly-ins, they have all kinds of different things. When I, when I got first involved in, you know, doing, doing a campground idea and doing this RV, I did some traveling. I went around, I basically Googled campgrounds within, you know, 25 miles. I found four. So, went around and looked at them and found that a lot of the guests, a lot of the people that stay at these campgrounds, they take really nice care of the campgrounds. I mean, this isn't something that I want to have end up being an ISOR or anything like that. I was very impressed with a lot of the RVs, a lot of the people that travel, nice, very nice vehicles. They show up, all kinds of different activities. People show up, they stay for, you know, we've got the casinos, we've got the bike trail there, we've got the kayaking guy that's across the street from there. There's activities that they can do. Plus too, they're not too far from the downtown, you know. We're all trying to promote the downtown. I own a lot of stuff downtown in that area, some houses, some different things. I like to see the downtown prosper. The more people we can draw in, stay the night, stay a couple days, stay a week, the more people that we can get to go downtown. Look at the things, look at the shops, you know. And that's, that's, you know, hopefully a great selling point with, with trying to do it. So, if anybody has any questions, that's what I showed up tonight for, and to see if I can answer.
I had one question.
Yeah.
And you may or may not have an answer, but with the plans that you have, purpose for the property there, do you have any timelines as to how long it would take?
Well...
To get prepared to set up and...
Fortunately, the infrastructure's already there. We've already, we removed the trailers off of the pads. The water's there. So, there's actually sewer at each one of the, each one of the pads. We've kept the grounds maintenance very well. Some of the electric will have to be updated. That will be my, my longest, is dealing with Duke. You know, you contact Duke, and I've done this, new service takes a little bit. There's some wires that are coming in that I don't like. And I know they'll, our building department, I've talked to Larry, and, you know, that's gonna be the key thing. I don't really think that the, we discussed the water there. That, the old trailer park had a very unique situation where they have, everybody pays their own water, okay? And when I spoke to Larry Tuttle, Bill Inspector, we discussed the water, and I told Larry, I said, "Well, I, the water would be in my name, but instead of doing like 60 of water meters," which is just crazy, we were discussing going in and just putting in a, a meter to service all of them. So we don't have to deal with that, and then that'll cut down on it, and basically, you know, I'm responsible for 100%. So, really, there's not a lot. I mean, I'm not looking at, it's low impact. Of course, you know, the property's gonna be zoned C-2, so I'm not really, I'm creating a business here, but I'm not, you know, coming in there and I'm not putting up a whole bunch of buildings and doing a lot of things. So, what we're doing is, is we're utilizing what we have. Hopefully, it attracts people in, but if somebody shows up and they say, "Hey, you know, I wanna purchase the property," and offer me some crazy amount of money, of course, they have to come back to staff, and it's gonna be presented, and you guys can decide whether or not that's gonna work or not. So, I'm just looking at what, where we're sitting at. The property's been vacant now for a couple years, and I'm just looking at trying to develop it and do something with it that's beneficial.
Mr. Faulkner, does the little strip shopping center there, is that included in this piece of property?
No, actually, there's two different parcels. This specific piece of property, which now has an address of 2,000 Germantown Road, was actually split on a 2013 conveyance where when the mobile home park went into receivership, the new owners purchased the park from the bank, which is ACG. They condensed everything. They took the pads from 306 pads and they cut 14 and a half acres off. So, that 14 and a half acres now is the 2,000 Germantown Road. The little strip mall, it's been its own entity of record. It's on its own deed. It's been there since, I guess, 1970, when the park first, when they first did the infrastructure of the park. They created that different.
Do you have any plans with that doing?
That's your...
That's the next...
That's the second one. Yeah, see, I had to do two different applications on this, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Faulkner.
Okay.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor of the proposed zone change? All right, is there anyone to speak in opposition to the proposed zone change? All right, hearing now, I'll close that public hearing, and we'll go on to case 2,000, or 2-16.
Oh, yes, Your Honor. This is again from Mr. Faulkner to rezone the parcel located at 2,400 Carmody Boulevard from I-1 Industrial to C-2 Roadside Commercial, approximately just under two acres. Again, you've got an aerial map with the star where that property is located, the current zoning map. And if you're familiar with the area at all, this is actually the part with the little strip center along there that fronts on Carmody. This is the attached to and next contiguous to the one you just went through. History is about the same on this one. It was, again, formerly part of the Riverside Mobile Home Park. The former owners requested to modify the development plan and put that as I-1 at that time. That was split out in August of 2013. On May 14th, Planning Commission again denied the request at that time to change it to a C-2 zoning for the same reasons as we did in the first hearing. On August 3rd, Mr. Faulkner came back and again has asked us to switch it over to C-2 Roadside Commercial, due to the property remaining vacant. And again, he has a plan for this as well as the RV park. Again, this is currently zoned I-1 Industrial Park. This is the same analysis and same review that was taken on the first one. He is requesting a change to C-2 Roadside zoning, which again would allow C-1 and C-3 uses as well. Again, this is one that, property has high traffic and visibility. Existing office and retail space is there. Mr. Faulkner has plans to update the facade with stone and stucco to give it a more modern appearance. Has in the past had a grocery store and produce market, which would be consistent with the C-2 use. There'll be an additional 4,000 square feet in commercial space that he could work on filling, which again could bring new business and new jobs to the city. We will, he is planning to use the existing men and women's restroom and shower stalls in that building to service the RV park. And again, this is consistent with the C-2 zoning as requested. Master plan and airport strategic plan are exactly as they were before. You've got older plans and obsolete things going on in these plans that while they do need to be looked at, I assign them much less weight than I did maybe five years ago, and believe that this is probably the best use, especially since it sat again from 2014 to 2016 with no interest at all in using the property. Planning Commission received no other city departments' comments on this piece of property. Same process as before. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this change. Staff concurs with that and recommends that the plan be approved by City Council and the zoning map amended accordingly.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Atkins? Okay, hearing now, open the public hearing, ask if there's anyone to speak in favor of the proposed zone change. Good evening again, Mr. Faulkner.
Hello again. You want me to state my name, okay?
Yeah.
Don't need to. Okay. Well, same thing. It's gonna be part, I'm gonna utilize this property, put it in with the, what I wanna do in the back. There used to be a swimming pool that was part of this property, and that facility that serviced the pool, men and women bathrooms, still there. So, still have the shower stalls, men, women, have a backside door that goes to either or, both sides. Basically, gonna do some cleaning, remodeling on those, and put a facade on the front of the building. Stucco, bring it up a little bit, put some nice big, I don't know, it's what they call it, EVIS. I think one of, Dicky Brandon, I think, has just done that type of work on Central Avenue, right down from AutoZone. Actually, the same guy that works, that did that is actually one of my guys that does stuff for me. So, same kind of scenario, probably, to really bring it up, make that building look really nice. The building's got a lot of potential. It's got a new roof. It has all new ACs on top of it. The one side of it, it looks practically new inside. It's got new ceilings, new everything in it. So, it's ready to go. Just gotta get your guys' vote, that's it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else to speak in favor of the proposed zone change? And is there anyone to speak in opposition to the proposed zone change? Anyone to speak in opposition to? All right, hearing now, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. I'll receive notices and comment cards, so we can move on to Mr. Atkins' city manager reports.
Good evening, council. I have three things for you this evening. The first one, I wanted to give you a heads up. We are working to start getting things together for the end of the year. One of the things we do every year is to go through and get several chemical bids for the water and water treatment and sewer plants. We do that through our Southwest Ohio Purchasing Group. The lead entity is Montgomery County. We are doing everything we can to get those ready for you on a normal approval schedule. If Montgomery County does not get them to us until at the last minute, we may have to bring them to you in November or December as an emergency. Trying to give you a heads up, we try not to give you any more surprises than we have to, but we are doing everything we can to keep that process under the normal two reading process, but we will, wanted to let you know that that was hanging out there, and we've not received the information we need yet to bring it forward to council. So, just keeping you in the loop. Wanted to talk a little bit about Hook Drive. A couple of you have received information or questions about our purchase of Hook Drive parcel this evening. Wanted to talk a little bit about that. That's being purchased for infrastructure additions at the airport. This parcel, which is in yellow on the map, is being purchased so that we can put an access road, water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure back to the west end of the airport. It is currently proposed that we pay $50,000 out of the property development fund, $12,500 out of the general CIP fund, $12,500 out of the capital stormwater fund, $12,500 out of the water stormwater capital fund, and $12,500 out of the sewer capital stormwater. This is, for effective purposes, no different than purchasing an easement or purchasing a right-of-way to add utilities. We always have the right to do that. There was a, I didn't like, after I read the staff report, it got out, but there was a question on there. The staff report seemed to read as though the value of it was $28,000 and some dollars. That was the auditor's value of assessed value, which is 35%. We wanted to let you know on the term sheet that we have actually had a professional appraisal done before we brought it to you. Gem Real Estate completed a normal commercial appraisal. It did appraise it $115,000 as is. You're being asked to purchase it for $100,000, $15,000 under appraisal. There has been a Phase 1 environmental. There were no hazards seen on that, and the owner is leaving for Florida for the winter, and they're trying to get this transaction completed before he leaves for several months. So, wanted to bring this to your attention. The starred property on the map is what we're talking about, that parcel. What that does is open up between 10 to 15 acres on the west side of the airport. We've talked about this a little bit at council retreats and other things, but the idea is to open up that to longer-term aviation-type jobs, higher-paying jobs. This allows additional acres to be developed at the airport. The addition of new water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure would also come out of the capital improvement funds for each of these areas. The new water customers that we would add from those businesses lessen our need to hit our residents up later for some of these huge, these huge costs that we have coming with the long-term control plan and our plants and everything else. The more customers we have on the system, the more we can spread those costs out. So, it's a good thing. Sometimes you have to spend money to make money. Wanted to talk a little bit about the process, and, yeah, try to say this, we have five attorneys on staff, and we have professionals throughout the building. This has been vetted through the Economic Development Department, Public Works Department, the Law Department, the Finance Department, and I've looked it over. And we would never, ever knowingly, give you anything that had any questionable ethics, appropriateness of expenses, illegal, unethical. It would never make it to your agenda. And so, I hope as you move forward, that you can build some trust in your staff, that if it's on the agenda, it's legal, it's ethical, and it's appropriate. Now, if it's a bad policy decision, that is exactly where you guys should step in and say, "Yeah, I know it's legal and it's appropriate, but we don't think we should be spending capital dollars out of that for this purpose." That's a completely appropriate thing to talk about, but I hope you will move forward and develop some trust in your staff that if it's on your agenda, it's legal, it's ethical, it's appropriate, and it's ready to go for your consideration. And I wanted to make sure that the person who called you, some of you, I will tell you, I have dealt with in community revitalization for about four years. And that person would call HUD, and they would literally say, "This illegal thing, that's illegal, right?" And HUD will go, "Well, yeah, that illegal thing's illegal." And I would call back and say, "Under this regulation, using this piece of this, we're taking this action. That's appropriate, right?" And HUD would say, "Well, of course, that's why the money's there." Please keep in mind that... Please keep in mind that you're going to get the answer to the question you ask. We have vetted it correctly and are bringing it to you, already having the answer correctly, legally, ethically, and appropriately financially. You just got an award for your distinguished audit from the State of Ohio. We don't bring you things that are inappropriate. Again, it's a policy decision. It's fine. But please, we wouldn't have it in front of you if it wasn't right. So, I just wanted to say that. This is really important to us. We do need it to be done tonight if we're going to move forward with this, because he's leaving town, and we may not have the opportunity to buy this next spring when he gets back. It may be sold out from under us. There is another purchaser that has been inquiring about the property. So, again, we try so hard to make sure that you're proud of us. We try so hard to make sure that you believe in us and that we're doing it. And it's important to us that you trust us and that you believe in us. And if you don't, that you express why and let us try to do a better job of getting that information to you. So, the last thing I wanted to get into tonight was the 2017 budget presentation. This is for the public safety. We had done everything else at the last meeting. Public safety as a whole is going up 1.3 percent in 2017, at least what you have in front of you. Keep in mind that there's a 1.5 percent increase in wages for all employees in the 2017 budget, including public safety and the collective bargaining agreements, which means we are actually increasing public safety less than the rate -- than the wages that are being given. You also are adding 12 new firemen and being reimbursed with SAFER grant, which is why, although fire is going up 9.9 percent, when you take the grant back out, again, overall, public safety is going up 1.3 percent overall. Division of Fire, if you back out the public safety SAFER grant, is actually operating in 2017 at $13,500 less than it did in 2016. And, again, you're adding 12 new firemen to the mix, which allows us to do a lot of cool things as we get into some of the goals and objectives for next year. We are going to continue to work on an automatic aid agreement with Monroe Fire Department. That actually, even though it is taking a long time, is going really well. We are in the process now where we're trading services regularly to help each other out. What we're trying to do is, as we do this over several months, evaluate where we've tripped up. And before we put something in writing as to how we're going to do an automatic aid agreement, have worked out some of those bugs and know that we are heading in something that Monroe's City Council and you are going to be comfortable adopting. We are going to continue to work on EMS calls for service through education. We have a fair number of false alarms and things that we are going to work on in 2017 to try to get some of those under control. We are going to update the Community Disaster Plan in March of 2017. We will continue to work on the heroin overdose issue. We had our eighth heroin summit Monday of this week and continue to work on that. We are also continuing to expand Fire Department participation in staff projects, task forces, boards, commissions in 2017. We'll continue to work with other city departments to have an all-hazard fire and emergency response capability by the end of December '17. We have had two or three incidences in the last several years where we've been at less than peak staffing, where we've called in Butler County for our help. They have a countywide that sometimes takes them 20 to 30 minutes to get there. It would be better if we had the ability here to handle most of those situations with the extra 12 people that we're going to be bringing on with SAFER grant. That gives us a lot more manpower to start looking at how we can do some individualized training and reestablish some of those lost capacities over the next year. We will continue to work on developing additional activities with National Fire Prevention Week. We will work with the Dispatch Center to look at National Telecommunication Week. We'll work on some capital grants that are out there to look at some of our air quality monitors and our self-contained breathing apparatus for our older fire equipment. We are working on a five-year division strategic plan, especially looking at fire location analysis. One of the things we know is, as the city grew towards the highway, our fire stations, which were built 30, 40, 50 years ago, are not best positioned to be able to give everybody the fastest service. We're going to look at where they ideally would be and then start talking about how we would start repositioning our fire department stations 2018 to 2020. There's also some software programs we're using to shift scheduling, training, and equipment inventories that we will be adding in 2017. Division of Police, the biggest change you're going to see there is that we are transferring people from Uniform Patrol, Police Services, and Jail Management into criminal investigation. What that is, is strictly a task force that does nothing but goes out and targets hotspots in crime and the chronic nuisance ordinance. You will find that we are, although that's going up almost $600,000, we are transferring officers from Uniform Patrol and the jails over to the detectives to form this task force. Again, every week, all they do is go out and do community policing efforts and enforce the chronic nuisance ordinance to start knocking down the places where crime is happening in our community. The remaining personnel services increases are due to steps, raises, and increases in healthcare costs. Uniform Patrol, we are, although, again, we're not reducing officers, but we are taking them out of Uniform Patrol and putting them on community-oriented policing. Jail, last year had a police officer assigned to the jail. We're pulling that officer out and, again, reassigning them to work on the street. Middletown Division of Police Goals and Projects for 2017. We are seeing now reductions in thefts, reduction in Part 1 crimes, reductions in call for service across the city. In 2016, we're going to continue to work on that. We are also seeing a 50 percent increase in drug arrests, which means we're out there pounding hard on trying to work on the heroin, both on the dealership and get the addicts into treatment. We will continue to work with Crime Housing and Quality of Life with Community Revitalization, Building Inspection and other departments in targeted neighborhoods. We will continue to listen to the community and look for additional training in police legitimacy, implicit bias, and training along those lines. We will continue to hard-hit the chronic nuisance ordinance in 2017 to hit hotspots, use the task force. We are continuing to look at the feasibility of body cameras. One of the only issues, we don't have any issue with having them. The only issue that we have, that we've seen other communities deal with, is the issue of public records law. When and where do those body cameras become public records issues? It's not an issue if you're pulling somebody over and you go out and their body camera records it. It's a question of if you're going into a house and there's a domestic violence incident and you've got things going on and you've got a battered woman, at what point do you shield that? There's a lot of things like that, that you want to make sure that you've thought it through before you implement the program. There's also a lot of storage costs with all of these cameras to keep all the data. We're looking at it. We believe in it. But we want to make sure that Ohio laws define those things, that we feel like we know where we should be and we're doing it correctly. We will probably see those at some point when we have those answers. There's a kiosk that, after we get the public safety software that's in the budget for this, I believe, this meeting, as it's implemented, there are kiosks that are available in the police lobby that would allow people 24 hours a day to post bond and do things like that. We're evaluating the effectiveness of those and how they would interact with court. We'll be looking at that next year. And we'll continue, as a community and law enforcement and public safety as a group, to work on heroin addiction in the city. That's an overview of your public safety budget. Again, you've now heard just an overview of the whole thing. You've had the entire budget for two or three weeks now. You've got November 1st for a first reading, November 15th for a second reading, and staff is ready at any time to answer specific questions. If you can, again, email them to us. We will answer them, turn them back around to everybody so that everybody sees the same information. But that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Very good. We can move on to our consent agenda. Ms. Gang.
Your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the City Council Minutes from October 4th, 2016, to receive and file Board and Commission Minutes from the Park Board of August 1st, 2016, the Library Board from August 16th, 2016, the Historic Commission from August 25th, 2016, the Board of Zoning Appeals from September 7th, 2016, to receive and file an oath of office for Bradley Sorrell, and to approve the purchase of 12 sets of firefighting gear from Phoenix Safety Outfitters of Springfield, Ohio, in the amount of $32,328.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions listed on the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
And we have one motion item this evening?
To authorize a contract with Voya for stop-loss coverage in 2017. The total cost is projected to be $338,657 and is included in the 2017 budget.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. I sent out an email yesterday to Council at about 12:30 yesterday afternoon. We received an email from our insurance broker stating that Voya, who was the only vendor to submit a quote for the 2017 for our stop-loss, had a 16 percent increase, which, again, we had incorporated into the budget. But they needed a contract signed by October 19th to preserve that. And without that ability, they would do -- send it back to underwriting. And it would be more than that, but they couldn't tell us how much more it would be. So, that put us in the position of, yesterday afternoon, sending out an email to Council and adding an immediate emergency staff report. Staff is reluctantly recommending that we, on the fly, do a motion to accept this. The cost will be more than this if we don't accept it. I apologize for bringing this to you at the last minute. Didn't have any choice. But we do believe it's the best thing that we've got to offer you for this coverage.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Here now, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of a contract with Voya for stop-loss coverage 2017, with a cost projected to be $338,657, included in 17 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Present our counsel comments this evening. Start with Mr. Picard.
Thanks, Mayor of North Carolina.
All right. Very good. Mr. Picard.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. Yeah, Thursday of last week, quite a few of us took the time to go down and support the firefighters and the Pink Ribbon Girls and spoke with one of the firefighters today and found out that they raised $3,000 for that event this week. So, just wanted to pass on the congratulations on that endeavor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Just two brief items. I also had the opportunity to attend the Pink Ribbon Girls event. That was wonderful. And then Vice Mayor Bronston and I got to take part in National Manufacturing Day. It was great to have that here in Middletown and was just a wonderful event. And I'm sure you're going to talk a little bit more about that, maybe.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of events that pertain to prison ministry. We're talking about, a lot about our heroin summits. And I attended the Community Advisory Board Meeting at Lebanon. I like to invite some of our city leaders there when we have other programs that are going on. There are a lot of people from different counties that gather together and share information like we do for the heroin summit. I also went to the reentry program at the atrium, the Butler Warren Reentry Program, and I've shared the information I received there with our city manager. And perhaps he can pull some things out that we need to be involved in or whatever suggestions you have. So, those were the two things I did. And like Councilman Moon said, I did go to the manufacturing event, got connected with the liaison with Governor Kasich's office. Of course, Mr. Warren Davidson was there and got a personal tour from the presidency, yo. So, we did make strides there, and it was a great event. Lots of young people. So, it was a good thing. Just wanted to say about voting, get out to vote on November 8th. I'll be working the polls. Of course, you know, after 51 years of our Voter Rights Act, we should take advantage and exercise our rights to vote. Many people did lose their lives, and a lot of people had barriers to overcome. And so, I think it's a moral and ethical civic duty of ours to get out and vote. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronston. I just have a couple things to mention. I wanted to report that Keep Middletown Beautiful is co-sponsoring the River Cleanup this Saturday morning. If folks are interested in coming out to that, starts at 9:00 a.m. and runs through noon. Information should be found on their website, keepmiddletownbeautiful.org. But it's usually a fun time, and I've been doing it for the last few years with the Suncoke Community Advisory Panel. And I think the weather's supposed to be pretty nice this Saturday. Last year it was a little rainy, but this year, the mayor will promise good weather. How about that? Looking forward to that. Last, I just wanted to compliment the organizers of the Broad Street Bash. They had their monster bash, which I think kind of wrapped up their concert series for the summer, which was their 10th year, which, again, I can remember when they first came to council with that great idea. And it's been volunteer-led and run for the past 10 years and grown every year. I think a great tribute to the volunteer efforts here in the community, just an example of some of the good things that happened. And I certainly understand that was a good time. And, again, I think they had real good weather for that, and a good time was had by all. And with that, we can turn it over to Ms. Bretton for our legislation this evening.
Thank you. There are seven items of legislation on tonight's agenda. Of those, one is an emergency item. We will need a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate reads as to the following resolution. Resolution number R.2016-38.
Make a motion to waive the charter that requires reading on two separate days for resolution 2016-38 and declare an emergency to be read one time only.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Ordinance number O.2016-37, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to consent to the city of Middletown participating in the Ohio Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program. This is also a second reading. Is ready for action.
And do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? All right. Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ordinance number O.2016-38, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Civica CMI for public safety software. This is also a second reading. Ready for action.
All right. Do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? All right. Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Resolution number R.2016-38, a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain real property, approximately 3.9 acres located on Hook Drive, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Okay. I know Mr. Atkins had some of us in his city manager report. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Ordinance number O.2016-39, an ordinance changing the zoning classification for approximately 15.5064 acres of land located at 2,000 Jerrit Town Road and approximately 1.9169 acres of land located at 2,400 Carmody Boulevard to a C-2 roadside commercial district. This is a first reading.
Okay. And our subject of our public hearing this evening? Sixth ordinance, Ms. Bretton?
Ordinance number O.2016-40, an ordinance establishing pay ranges, pay policy, and benefits for various salaried and hourly classifications within the service of the city. It's also a first reading.
Okay. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. Pay and Benefits Ordinance Committee has reviewed all the changes submitted by the city departments. They were then submitted to be for approval, and they are set forth below as they apply to each ordinance, this one and the next one, which does the Health Department. Those changes are all consistent with the budget that you have received and also with the presentations made at the City Council. The new scale also is consistent with the proposed 1.5 percent cost of living increase for the city's non-organized employees.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Thank you.
The last...